Thank you. One member who hasn't excused that absence. Commissioner Chang, and we welcome Commissioner Chow to the commission at this time to take his place. The agenda has been posted in the San Marino. City Hall, the San Marino Public Library, the Recreation Department and on the website. We don't have a busy calendar tonight, other than some internal. But as to plans, the general order is that we ask the staff. Staff member for their background, the whole synopsis of the case. Then we'd ask the applicant or applicant's representative to step forward. And give a brief summation or highlight some points that they wish to make about the particular matter. I will then ask whether there's anyone in the audience or remote. Who wishes to speak for or against their about the proposal. After hearing all of that, we would close the public aspect of the hearing. And we poll the commissioners for their point of view on the application. Most of the applications we have involve variance, conditional use permits and a design review. We discuss each one individually and then. Ask whether anyone on the commission wishes to make a motion. In the event of a continuance. Or denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard enough information to. Come before us again with something that is acceptable. It's important to note that if there is a grant of an application. That the legal documents constitute the application itself. And are not to be varied. The penalty is quite severe, equal to fifty, excuse me, five percent of the project valuation. Or twenty-five hundred and then. There's a resuminal process. There's a fifteen day appeal period, whether you're an applicant or a member of the public that is interested. To take the matter up to the city council. Okay, and with that, let's begin the process as to.
Chair, if we can, if we can take roll call, please.
Okay, please do.
Alternate Commissioner Okazaki is absent. Alternate Commissioner Chow.
Present.
Commissioner Dustin.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And Chair Brody.
Here.
And Vice Chair Chang is also absent. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone so that our audio is captured in both Zoom and YouTube. Unfortunately, we are having some technical difficulties with YouTube. But if anyone's on Zoom and can relay that to anyone who's interested in watching this, that would be greatly appreciated. Chair, members of the commission, as all of you know, the state has. Passed numerous mandates that require cities to update their zoning ordinances to address certain. Housing projects and we're here tonight to address one of those. And so cities can only oppose clearly defined objective standards for streamlined residential projects. In other words, cities can no longer have subjective discretionary processes for these. For these projects. If you recall in February this year, the planning commission adopted a resolution. Recommending that the city council adopted ordinance amending the municipal code to allow for the residential. Objective design standards to be applied to multifamily projects in the C1 zone. And that was due to us not having any objective design standards for multifamily projects. While staff and our consultant capstone city planning represented by Ms. Allison Cook here tonight. Work on drafting objective design standards. So before you tonight, we have drafted, we have presenting, representing these objective design standards. To be imposed on all multifamily development projects. Examples of the proposed objective design standards are those of height. Density, building siding to minimize conflicts with adjacent residential uses. Roof lines, architectural articulation, lighting, colors and so forth. Staff would like to present the objective design standards to the city council on June fourteenth. In order to have some level of protection in case these projects come before the city. So that's really our goal here tonight. You should have received the D I S, a revised. Objective design standards. I'll go through those. Please don't be scared. They're not that many. One of the benefits that I've had in my career is that when I'm dealing with the planning commission is that you deal with. Individuals who have, you know, a number of professions. And I'm lucky here that obviously we have two attorneys. We have someone who's in marketing, insurance, actually three attorneys. And then we also have a traffic engineer and. I would like to note that I've had communications with all of you. In regards to this particular ordinance and. Through the discussions that I've had with all of you, we made some changes that I think would solidify this particular ordinance. Isn't put us in a better position in case any of these projects come forward. We, I spent a lot of time with Commissioner Wright, who in her past life did this for a living for the city of L A. So I think we have a strong document here. We also want to thank the city attorney's office. Mr. Steve McEwen, Mr. Joseph Montes for their assistance. And we have provided them with the draft revised ordinance. So I think we're in good shape. So I'll go through the changes. Again, they're minimal. And our goal here is to hopefully have something that we can present to the city council on June fourteenth. Starting on page number one.
Excuse me, as you go through them, can we ask questions or do you want us to wait?
Whatever your pleasure is.
Okay, thank you.
So on the first page, we eliminated the historic property definition just because we already have a historic preservation ordinance. So I think this is just redundant, not necessary. If we go to page four. We eliminated item number seven, we numbered item number eight. And for item number six, we basically consolidated six and seven to just make it clear. On page number five, we eliminated contiguous. We didn't think it was necessary. Page seven. For, and this is not highlighted in your packet, but for item B1. Where it starts off with articulation, we'll amend that to read architectural articulation. And then item eight, Roman numeral number two, we're just making a reference to the definition. Provided for architectural features in the zoning ordinance. For item B, Roman numeral number two, we thought the sentence that we are proposing to be eliminated wasn't necessary. It kind of just confused the purpose of the, of the standard. So we eliminated that. On page eight, again, we eliminated or other habitable projections. I think balconies is sufficient. We don't need to add anything else to that in regards to that and. Item two F, we just eliminated that. That was just not necessary. On page nine, item number nine C. That was, that was an error. It should be change your world plane of a minimum depth of two feet, not or. So and then an item number or item C4. Instead of identifying where security bars are now allowed, really, there's no real security bars in the city. So we just prohibiting that and it's really not a good design anyways. So. We thought that was appropriate. On page 10, we added the sentence or the portion to the last sentence to read. When recessed the building primary siding material. To cover the recessed faces and wrap toward the interior face of the window or door glazing. By at least three inches in depth. That's just to clarify the intent there. On page 11. It currently reads a primary material shall constitute a minimum of twenty percent. It should be sixty percent to be consistent with the rest of the, the standards. On page 12, that was just a misspelled word. That should be corner. On page 13, to clarify the color palette requirement, we eliminated. The last portion of the sentence and. And we included. Off white and light grades in addition to the earth tone. And again, that was just to clarify that, the intent. Page 14, item number. Page 10, we included fountains. That's a, that's a popular decorative feature here in the city. And again, on item 13, we included the reference of the architectural features definition. Towards the bottom, B1, we eliminated pathway and included walkway just to be consistent and we. Just reorganized where asphalt is prohibited, the language where indicates that. Minor change on page 15, we just instead of saying most adjacent building, we just clarify that to be nearest, to be more precise. On page 16, we eliminated said, and we'll start the sentence with accent. And then on item F4, we just eliminated the first sentence because it was unnecessary. And just added confusion. And then I think the most important one on page 17 in regards to the. R1 single family zone, the way it reads, I think it. It read in such a way where there could be a, an argument that we are allowing these uses in the R1, which we're not. What the intent was that in case there's any state law, which as you know, those, those are just moving targets. You never know where you're going to get something adopted. We wanted to be prepared in case these are mandated by the state to be allowed in the single family residential zone that. We already have these ready in case that happens. So we, through the assistance of the city attorney's office, we added the. The first part of the sentence to read now, only if multifamily residential development is authorized in the R1 single family dwelling zone. By virtue of any other section of this code or state law, then any new, and then it goes on. So I think that puts us in a stronger position. There are some, there is a numbering change. If you go to page. Two, I believe height and lot coverage have the same number. So that will change. So starting from lot coverage, that will be twenty-three point twenty point oh six. In regards to density, height and lot coverage. The reason why density was set at twenty units and acres to be internally consistent with our housing element, which has been adopted. With the law coverage of sixty percent, that would allow the. Unit per acres that we are calling for, for twenty, along with all the amenities, parking. Recreational opportunities for the tenants and so forth. So that allows it, the height is just essentially the same it is, as it is now in each district. And so that was the reason for those numbers. Mr. Chair, if you can speak to the.
According to the concept of. Twenty units per acre, that works out to twenty-one hundred and seventy square feet. If we take sixty percent of that, that's thirteen hundred, but you say some of that will go to common areas and the like. So do we have any estimate as to the number of rooms, bedrooms, baths? Size of the livable space at all, or is it? Kind of. Catch as catch can, or is it going to be the equivalent of a, of a college dorm?
We, we didn't come up with an analysis of that, in-depth analysis. Obviously, the, I think the. Challenge for any developer here will be. Finding a parcel that can accommodate what a developer will be able to gain a profit. It's really difficult. Obviously with our density bonus laws, someone can in theory come in. You know, request for the minimum and then for additional law, additional units, however, those units would have to be. Designated affordable. So how do you pencil out a profit at that point? So it's really difficult to pinpoint at this juncture, what those sizes are of those units. But the one thing that will be difficult is to find a parcel that would accommodate. A project that I think will be attractive to a developer.
Right, and there are. There are limits as to how many people that could be in a particular unit based upon the number of bedrooms. So will that apply as well? I think that's.
The building code applies to any project.
Great, thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. In terms of definitions under earth tone. I just want to confirm, we all recognize that marigold and turmeric are. Orange and yellow and I don't, I mean, I'm just. Those are considered earth tones because I have a variety of marigolds. In my garden and they range from bright orange. To bright yellow and we're saying that an exterior can be that, those colors.
What page is that?
It's page one. In definition and under earth tones.
I have no problems with that being deleted, but I would say that it does say, the deposition does talk about colors hues with brown undertones. So you certainly want it to be a marigold with a brown undertone, I think would be the argument, but. If we think it's yellow.
No, she brings up, excuse me, Commissioner Shelley brings up an excellent point. In that an undertone can mean a couple of drops in, in the paint mix and it still won't have an effect. So I'd, I'd certainly. Think that that's a wonderful suggestion and we ought to eliminate marigold and turmeric.
I mean, I would actually argue to eliminate a lot of them, but the ones that stood out are marigold and turmeric. I mean, turmeric is.
We delete.
Sunshine yellow.
Yeah, if we delete that whole thing, I think of turmeric and we're, as a green, so there you go. But if, this is what happens when you do including, of course. But if you start having an argument over what brown undertones is.
Right.
That's could be difficult too, except we do, we do define that very strongly. Show me a hue with a certain code.
Right.
That's helpful. Maybe that's all we need.
If the, if the commission. Were warranted, we could end the sentence at undertones, period. Strike the remaining portion of that sentence and then start second sentence as it is.
That is, that is confusing in and of itself because how much of a brown undertone? And what's the, what's the major color that's being employed? I mean, it, it becomes vague. And instead of undertones, I'd say such as rust, you know.
Well, I think the question is how much are you relying on the code for brown?
Meaning the RGB code.
Yes, sorry, the RGB code. Do you? Is that what you want? Do you want it to be with that? Code, that RGB code, then that's very specific, but that may not be what you want.
Right. I don't even know that. I know a lot of colors and I'm not, I did not think to look up that one, but. So I'm not, I don't know what to say. It just, I don't know if we would be happy if. There is a chance of finding a parcel that could be developed in this manner and all of a sudden it's marigold orange. If we would be happy as a community.
But how about just saying this brown undertones such as rust. Burnt sienna brown, terracotta, sage, period, and sage. And such as, so it would, it would be more definitive in that respect.
Like that better than simply deleting the including part and just going straight to that for the purposes of this definition?
Yeah, because.
You want to give some, you want to give some guidance.
Yeah.
Director Figaro.
Just delete marigold and turmeric.
Wait, I have, I have another, where did this RGB nine six four B zero zero come from? Is that like a. Because I'm looking at it now and it actually has, it is very orange in and of itself. So that's why I'm wondering like where did that, who, where, where did that specific city come from?
So Commissioner, so it's, it's another design guidelines that I've worked on along with M I G, which is a pretty big design firm. It's typically used for earth tone colors and design guidelines in cities. So it's pretty standard, but.
Okay.
It means that they have to have a hue. Doesn't mean that's the only color, right? It has to be in that family. I'm a designer, but that's, that's what it means.
Yeah.
Okay, so you feel better with keeping the including but deleting marigold and turmeric? Being, keeping rust burnt sienna brown, terracotta and sage. Just as including or such as.
Or such as.
Such as is fine.
So it's an example.
I mean, I, I understand it now based on, if you just look at the pantone colors in that family, they're listing them.
Is there marigold though?
Well, I don't know what this particular pantone is, but yeah, that's probably pantone and sage and burnt sienna. So I understand it, but it does cause me concern. And then moving on, just my other question for you. So page fourteen, B pavement line or section one. Asphalt is prohibited. I very much agree with that sentence, but what I want to know is, is that specific to pedestrian paving? So it does not, and, and I see that we call out driveway entry treatment and. As not allowing asphalt. But I assume that parking lots and other areas will be allowed asphalt. We cannot prohibit that in totality.
I think it should.
I mean, that's what I'm asking. Can we prohibit asphalt in totality? But as we move towards. But even I, I hear you guys talking about cost prohib.
Prohibited.
Prohibited. I understand that, but asphalt creates heat island effects. And that then is a resource, it's a resource drain on. Multi-use air conditioning and heating. And so even if we say asphalt is prohibited, that would. Allow for cool pavement that is not cementing everything, you know, or doing pavers or, you know, some expensive.
One option with regard to the asphalt would be to just make either a recommendation. Or alternatively, instead of it being a total prohibition, you could come back with a. Limitation on the percentage of the parking area that would be covered with asphalt, but those would be. Potential alternatives that you could consider.
Kind of like the idea of asphalt being prohibited. I think it's an excellent thought.
And when you talk about the paved areas in the yard setbacks.
Is there a concern that if we make some, it. If we say asphalt is prohibited, that increases the cost of the project, therefore it becomes. Not, it becomes a liability or an opening for legal issues for a developer. Is that what I'm hearing from the internal conversation amongst you?
So, so when it comes to these projects, especially those that are, that have been. That the law has been crafted to facilitate. There is a certain concern. What I do think is that at this juncture, if the planning commission feels. That this is something they would like to recommend to the council. I think we can include in the recommendation, staff and the city attorney's office can study this. And if we feel there's a certain liability, then we can present those findings to the council at the council hearing.
I, I mean, the reason I'm bringing it up, as we all know, I tend to bring a climate crisis on this panel. But I do constantly feel we are getting conflicting information from our state legislature on. Certain things that we have to do with regards to the housing laws, but then it's in direct conflict with what, with what we're being told to do with regards to the climate crisis. So asphalt, as we know, is a terrible. What a contribution to our ongoing heat issues. And so it seems to me that if it's making the recommendation, then I would like to do that.
Are you talking about the, the paving everywhere?
I'm talking, apparent in the pavement, it seems to be called out that certain areas. It makes it, the only thing that I was really concerned about was the vast amount of a parking area for twenty units. That would be covered in black asphalt.
Because I'm also.
Everything else seems to be kind of covered in terms of saying it'll be scored concrete or whatever.
Right way for sure. I can't remember if the recreation areas had specific. Paving requirements, because I don't do, because I don't think they do. If we're, if we're saying paved areas and yard setbacks, which includes the backyard where the recreation amenities will more like, like the play area, for example. Paved areas shall not exceed fifty percent of the required front or street side yard setback area. Is that fifty percent allowed to be asphalt?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, Commissioner. So what, what that would mean is that is trying to. Minimize the amount of paved service in the setbacks. You want more landscaping and open space. So that's really what it is.
Right. What about the other fifty percent though? I, I get that it's, it can't exceed fifty percent, but that fifty percent, what can it be?
It has to be landscaping or open space. So the setback can't have a building, right? So therefore it's either paved or it's landscaped. So what is, we can add more language to clarify that, but right now it's basically saying that. It, your setbacks can't have more than fifty percent pavement.
But what?
And my question is.
Be asphalt.
Right. My question is what material can that pavement be, including asphalt?
Asphalt, could be tile.
That was my question. So we want it to, I, I want it anyway to include if no asphalt to the play area. And into the, to the recreation amenities.
I think so.
And, and you, you look at the effect and, and this is what was brought up here on a developer. God, when you're trying to put twenty units on one acre, you're not going to have a lot of area to do anything. I mean, you're lucky if you have a little bit of a patch of garden or a tree. I mean, it, it's going to be all for the most part, concrete and wood.
Chair, but then you have your sixty percent building coverage max.
Yeah, I'm, I'm counting on that. Yeah.
The forty percent remaining is parking.
Right.
Air spaces.
So if you look at.
Landscaping, I mean, whatever.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Forgive me.
Allison.
Allison, if you look at the sixty percent, you're taking thirteen hundred is, is your livable area. Maximum and you're looking at a, breaking it down. Twenty units to one acre, it's twenty-one seventy. So you're looking at what? Eight hundred square feet that you're dealing with? And most of that is going to be clearly some landscaping of sorts. I mean, it's, it's clear to me that this is not going to be an issue. From a cost perspective.
So the, we, we could add to page fifteen. Number four, if you want to read it.
Yes, well, we, something that we added number four that talks about paving in all other areas, which we'd say parking lots, drive aisles. And then you wanted to include play areas, recreation.
Absolutely.
Asphalt concrete would not be allowed in any of those areas. So we'll, we'll get some exact wording of that, but basically a catchall for everything else.
Recommendation. Thank you. Yes, thank you. That actually was something that bothered me and I spoke to the director about. That the paved area should not exceed fifty percent of those setback areas. But we do need to give room for the recreation. I wanted some greenery to be somehow required, but. Because of the amenities that are required, I, I don't know if we could even carve out a. And, and, and two percent needs to be, you know, grass. I, I just.
Well, I, I also want to remind the commission that we do have a landscaping. Section of our code that we will rely on. So I think we're protected there. But I do think that based on what Allison just read out, I think that would capture your concern.
Okay. And then the only other recommendation, which I know we talked about. Okay. And then the only other recommendation, which I know we talked about offline, is that instead, I think it again is in the parking lots, that instead of requiring a twenty-four inch box tree that we explore the idea of having it be, um, canopy and like saying that it has to be uh, based on the tree, uh, five to six foot shade canopy as put in, in the ground as opposed to a box.
And, and I think that's a perfectly logical, uh, recommendation, but I do think because we are going to be exploring updating the tree ordinance, I think we wait until that's captured and then we can update this according to that to be consistent. So I think I would, I would recommend the commission to go ahead and, and, uh, consider this particular.
And I will say, I really do appreciate that it does stipulate that, uh, forty percent of the parking lot has to have shade within fifteen years. Um, I don't know how that is necessarily enforceable, but I really, I, I appreciate that it is being in here because it is a goal that I think we should all go for.
It, it, it is enforceable. And again, as we spoke before, um, in regards to, um, that particular, uh, foliage coverage, it's depending on the species. And that's why, you know, unfortunately enough for us, we have our Orin Forrester, who is a certified arborist and would help out in that particular case.
That was it.
Uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, one thing that I wasn't sure was covered here or whether we wanted it to be covered here is some kind of requirement for a wall or fencing or whatever of the property. There's plenty of discussion about the, you know, the units and around within, but I'm not sure there is, and I'm not sure we want it. But, uh, just something about whether we would want to require, uh, some kind of boundary wall or fencing.
Next to its neighboring property?
If you're neighboring a residential or something.
But our current ordinance? Nothing.
Well, we don't have a requirement and typically you don't, you don't have those requirements, uh, in zoning ordinances. Uh.
Usually takes care of itself.
Right. Typically, everyone wants to have some sort of security and that's the method they, they go about or landscaping. Um, I, with walls, I would be a little bit careful to try to craft something right now just because we could, maybe it's a recommendation that you would like to include in your.
Oh, if I, my colleague, it's just something I wanted to bring up. I, and, and it would only be as a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I, I would merit further study just so that we don't compromise the aesthetic look of the city.
I don't know if it's a good idea. That's why I'm asking people who are better at this than I am. It was just something that as I read through everything, I, I wondered.
I would have reservations about that.
Yeah, because.
Because of the aesthetic look.
Too much like a fortress or. I mean, not really a fortress.
There's them and here's us.
Oh, oh, no.
Yeah.
Wasn't thinking in those. But just more of a, uh, I was actually thinking more of an aesthetic thing, but maybe it's a bad aesthetic thing.
Well, no, it, uh, it, it, it really is not a bad idea. It just depends on the location.
Yeah.
Everything is.
Yeah. If it can project specifically, we can't do that with this. It has to be.
You can't make a general rule.
That's really hard to do.
Uh, in the vein, I mean, I'm looking at, uh, tuck under parking and it says that tuck under parking, for example, which is on page four. Uh, paragraph C seven permits that parking, um, is either below grade. And then there's an or the conjunction or behind the living space is permissible. That's just a general rule. Some of the, the, uh, lots on this, in the C one zone doesn't necessarily, but, um, um, commercial always, I mean, some of them are but residential. So we're going to have a parking lot for our community. Um, uh, that, that is the little bit of concern. Um, and so whether a wall would be something to soften that or not.
Used only there, you know, if there, if tuck under parking is used then. We, yeah, well.
Just to have a universal rule, uh, when each property is unique and specific, maybe somewhat of a concern depending on uh, that especially because, uh, and then I, I don't want to jump around here, but in that same vein, on page one, under definition of, of objective, um, the, the definition so states that it involves no personal subjective judgment by a public official. Um, it, it, a design element, uh, by definition is a subjective, uh, somewhat subjective um, opinion of public officials and or a quasi-public officials. Um, and so I would, you know, maybe propose, uh, instead of being an absolute no, maybe we can use the term commercially reasonable personal objective standard by a public official based upon prevailing industry. Uh, developmental standards and similarly situated locales or something.
Well, I think the and really helps a lot though. It says and being uniformly verifiable, right? By reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion.
I, I would just like to add.
That's why I like, let that go.
I, I would just add too that that definition is strict, strictly from the state and, and that's why we included it.
I, I personally don't like knowable, but when you told me it was the state, I had to just, I'm showing you.
Okay. So does that, does that mean then that, um, I guess there are a lot of and conjunctions there with regard to benchmarking criteria and, and all that, but, um, how much latitude, I guess, would a body like ours have with regard to design elements and not fly in the face of this objectionable, um, objective definition?
I think the, the goal is basically none. I mean, I think the goal is that these are so objective. And I know for me going through it, every, pretty much every comment, every part I didn't like was I said, I don't think that's objective. And we needed to tighten it or eliminate or whatever, because that's the goal. The goal is that, you know, my five-year-old granddaughter, okay, I'm exaggerating. But, you know, my goal is that any reasonable person would, would agree, reasonable persons, reasonable minds should not differ. That's the goal. Reasonable minds should not differ when they're applying these standards. And if they do, problem with the standard. You're right. You're right.
Thank you. And then my, my very last comment, um, I guess is the requirement of a play structure for units of, uh, for developments of ten or more units.
Do you have a page number?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. That's page five, uh, section D two. For play areas.
Thank you.
Uh, is, is that also a state mandate or is that just, uh, based on kind of desirability of creating a community? As the size and, uh, of kind of these, these strips.
Yes, it, it wasn't a state mandate. It's more of an out recreational opportunity for the tenants. Of cour- of course, you know, we have a great park in Lacy Park, but in terms of recreational opportunities, we're limited in this city. Your cram, you know, I don't want to say you're cramming units, but obviously based on the topography that we have, based on the, the size of the lots. You, you want to make sure that you can provide the tenants with some recreational opportunities.
And, and so, um, and I, I, I appreciate that, um, with regard to the size of these, uh, at least I guess a minimum of two structured play modules, is that something that is also discretionary then at the time of development? Depending on what plans are submitted by the applicant. No, there's no indication of size, whereas, um, there are other mentions of size. I mean, I don't know if we're just getting into weeds here, but. And I'm just not, you know, to your point, um, uh, Sudriel, I, I don't know, um, if, you know, this just completely, um, prohibits or, or makes it a press, costs a prohibitive for developers to kind of take away square footage uh, from our pretty small units from, uh, what Mr. Chair, uh, had mentioned. Uh, I, I just, I don't know. Just kind of something that jumped out at me. I don't have a thought.
Well, in regards to the play areas, there are, um, there is a table down below that kind of, that speaks to based on a number of units, uh, of course, as a correspondent, um, minimum square footage of the recreational amenities that are required.
Thank you very much.
Um, I've got unfortunately some questions. Uh, I apologize, the directly Sidro. I thought I understood everything after we talked, but I confused myself after I looked at the documents more. Um, so I just have some questions to sort of clarify my overall understanding of this document. And then I'm also want to talk more generally about objective standards. Generally, because I have concerns about those for residences and ADUs as well. And I just sort of want to get it out there on the, the plant a seed in, in city council that they go back and look at those things. So my first question is on page one.
Commissioner Dustin, just before we move forward, uh, we, we do have to be careful though on the last two items you spoke to because we did not, um, uh, those two are not agendas.
Gotcha.
So I, I think we, we should err on the side of caution there.
Okay. Um, so page one, paragraph two. The first sentence there says, the provisions of this article apply to residential projects containing two or more residential dwelling units. The last sentence says, it does not apply to two-unit residential development. So I'm perplexed by that.
Commissioner, so the reference to S P nine, that's a specific state law you might be aware of that speaks to the urban lot split. So that's, I think the city has separate design standards for that, those type of projects that are coming in under that law. So the, so this, these standards would not apply to S P nine type lot splits and urban development.
Okay. So these objective design standards are to be applied to multifamily residential developments in the commercial zone.
Or I understand in residential as well, single family.
It, it is only in the C one at this point.
Okay.
Again, uh, back to the amendment that we're making to the residential, not knowing exactly what state mandates will be coming down the line. We want to be prepared. And so the way the language reads is that if any mandate comes down the line where multifamily is allowed by right or by other means in the residential, these standards would apply to that.
So currently we do not have objective design standards for that application, for the residential application.
It's multifamily is not allowed.
Okay. Um, so let me go back then to this document and I'll forego my other comments. Um, in line with what Commissioner Boyle had brought up about the asphalt, when I was looking through these, I'm looking at it more from an aesthetic perspective. And my suggestion is there's a lot of things in our design guidelines that are, we, that nothing is prohibited by those. They're strongly discouraged or, uh, discouraged. Um, if you go through that document, there's a lot of material you can pull, um, to sort of salt in where appropriate in here. For example, on window treatments. Mullions is not beyond a certain width, um, ninety-degree edge rig tiles. I don't, I mean, again, the, the reference here to roofing materials talks about the, um, the pre-approved roofing materials list and it, and the criteria that it applies, but there are, there, there can be products that come out and people use that don't fall on that pre-approved roofing materials list. And I, I just don't want to see ninety-degree edric, edric tiles proliferating in the city. Um, stucco finishes that, again, rough knockdown stucco is strongly discouraged in the design guidelines. It's an easy thing to put in here to just say you can't do it on a project. It would look horrible. It should just not be allowed. Um, simulated divided lights. Um, let me think, um, metal tube fencing, uh, as opposed to wrought iron. Um, double entry doors as opposed to single entry doors. Um, inappropriately sized entryways and doors. Um, those are all things that are strongly discouraged and you could set up an objective limit in these. So again, I know you need to do this by June, but I'm just saying I would strongly encourage the city to go back and revisit this and see where those can be applied.
I, I, I think it's a great idea. Um, I, I think if you carry that motion or if you include that in your motion, uh, that would obviously, um, you know, that would have the city council ponder whether they would like a staff to do that and direct us to come back at a later date to include those.
Yeah. I'm not going to make it.
Anyone, uh, wish to ask any other questions? Are we done with the questioning period? All right. Um, I don't think this is open to the public, is it?
It is. It's a public hearing.
And anyone wish to come forward and speak for, against or about this? All right. Not seeing or hearing anything. We'll close the public aspect of the hearing. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Is that another way of saying whatever he said?
It is, Mr. Chair. We are.
All looking to Commissioner Dustin.
Yeah, since I sort of mucked it up there at the end.
Right, to recommend those, that the design guidelines be added and as well to recommend that the, that asphalt be prohibited.
Okay.
And, and, uh, request that the staff be in.
Here is the name of the ordinance.
You're looking.
Here we go. Okay, so.
I'm, I'm looking at our lawyer to make him.
And but while, while we're waiting, I just, while we're waiting, I want to congratulate staff though, um, and our consultant. And a terrific job, a very thorough, uh, very well-written. And as, as the director said, I, I have reviewed hundreds, maybe thousands. I don't want to think about it. Not, not the main part of my job and my least favorite, I gotta admit. But none, nonetheless, I have reviewed hundreds and this one was really, truly, truly very well done. So thank you for all your hard work.
Uh, you want me to take a stab at this or? Please. So we're making a recommendation to city council. I would make a motion that, uh, the planning commission make a recommendation to city council to adopt ordinance number O dash two, three, dash fourteen, O two. Um, with the revisions discussed by, uh, Director Figaroa at the beginning of the meeting. And to include, um, uh, recommendation for the prohibition of asphalt. Uh, in its entirety in these projects and for the city council to consider, um, revisiting. Um, the.
To direct staff.
To direct staff to, um, review the residential design guidelines to look for materials that are strongly discouraged or design elements that are strongly discouraged and incorporate those where appropriate.
And as a prohibition.
As a prohibition, yes.
I second that.
Okay, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair Brody?
Yes.
The five O vote for approval for recommendation.
Uh, next up. On the calendar, please.
Item number two?
Please.
Um, so item number two is a consideration of appeal for design view case D R twenty-one dash fifty-five, D R twenty-two dash fifty-four at fourteen twenty-four Bradbury Drive. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximately five hundred and thirty-six square foot, single-story addition with an eighty-four square foot branda, demolish the existing two-car garage and construct a new four hundred and forty-one square foot detached two-car garage to the rear of the existing property. The proposed five hundred and thirty-six square foot addition includes a hundred and thirteen square feet addition to the front of the house and a hundred and forty-four square feet to the rear of the home. The planning commission lasts for the project on January fifth, twenty twenty-three, and the British, uh, commission brought up, um, several points of concern. Those concerns were, um, about density, about the proposed height and that it remain at the same height of the existing structure, the visual impact of the roof and the need for it to be minimalized and broken down into smaller elements. That the proposal was concerned that the proposal was not meeting the designer view guidelines. Um, there was a request that a landscape plan was provided showing where the replacement trees were going to be located. Um, there was a notation of a missing land, exterior landing and asked for clarification about the light fixtures manufactured. And asked for clarification about the light fixtures manufacturing model. The applicant has since resubmitted the plans and is now before you today. The two main changes the staff would like to point out from the previous um plans. Was a reduction of one hundred and eleven square feet of livable area to the rear master bedroom. And on page A three point zero one on the plans, there is a dash line on the elevations indicating the existing roof pitch. And in the shows, the new proposal of the new roof design, which should be within the the massing of the existing roof. Those were the main changes. Um, and uh, the applicant is here and staff. And able to answer any questions, did you have any?
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have any questions of staff?
I have.
Okay, not seeing any uh, any questions. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative here? Would you like to make a uh? Uh, highlight the application, make a short statement about it, please. Uh, we usually limit this to five minutes.
My name is Steve Gooey. I own the home and um trying to remodel the house. Uh, since the last meeting. Yeah, uh, complied with some requested changes. One of them, the biggest requested change was that corrected roof pitch. Uh, we made an error on the roof pitch and then now we corrected that error um. And maintain the roof pitch so that the height of the house. Remains at twenty one feet, actually is a little shorter by one inch, and that's verified by um the surveyor. Um, and we also removed the French doors on the north side of the house. Uh, that was requested so that um increased the privacy to our neighbors on the north side. And we decreased the massing um mentioned in the rear of the house by placing a branda, uh, we. Cut down the rear of the house by. Uh, four feet, so um the extension and added that brand to make it look a little lighter in the rear and also of. For outdoor enjoyment. Um. Uh, we're not changing the main style of the house, which is minimal traditional as stated by the historical. Um, architect. And we have strong neighbor support. Um. Uh, my neighbors are just waiting for me to get this house rolling because it's. Not in livable condition and decrepit and the roof is falling apart and. Have a lot of water damage that's in the inside from the last storm. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, gentlemen here? You know, yeah, go ahead, John.
You indicated that the existing height of the house is twenty one feet, one inch, but your information, your plan information sheet on sheet A one point oh two. Indicates twenty five feet. That. I just.
Twenty one is the correct. Uh, height.
Twenty one even or twenty one one?
Uh, the existing is twenty one feet, one inch, and the new one is twenty one feet.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, um. Any, any other questions, folks?
First, we'll verify that with a uh. Surveyor at the end, I think it's required during the framing.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. All right, anyone here wish to speak for, against, or about the proposal? Not seeing anyone, anyone online?
There is no one online.
Public aspect to the hearing and uh. Uh, Commissioner Shelley, you want to, I'll I'll go to someone else if you want. All right, Commissioner Jerry.
I I know we've. This one I have mixed feelings about. I do, I always appreciate when applicants uh make changes based on our um requests and our. Concerns, so thank you for that. I always appreciate that and I not in love with this project. Um, the height, the roof, I just, I'm not in love with it, but I feel like um. The applicant has addressed our concerns as to height. Um, as to massing, reducing it, um. Basement, you know, is going to be added to, it's not part of livable space, I'm not. Thrilled with that, but I think that's allowed and I also was concerned that the remodel meet the Secretary of Interior standards. And the expert has said that it does. I don't feel like I am qualified to substitute my judgment for that expert. So I do feel as if um our concerns have been um addressed for the most part anyway.
Thank you very much. Commissioner John?
Usually I start big problems to small problems. I guess I'll do it reverse order today. I don't uh think the proposed moldings around the entry, the windows and the exterior French doors are compatible with the architectural style. Um, they are a little bit ornate, they're more appropriate to like colonial revival as opposed to minimal traditional. The proposed exterior light on the front elevation is superfluous, it serves no purpose. Um, the entry lighting should be located within the alcove of the entry. And ceiling mounted, um, there's no reason to have a light on the front of the house, it's just an annoyance to neighbors. If light is needed on the walking path, then path lights are what is the appropriate remedy for that, not putting lights out on the wall. The proposed landscape plan is. Barely adequate in my view. Um, there's a large amount of hardscape in the rear yard. There's no significant shade tree proposed. Um, the Surinam cherries that are proposed along the rear wall, they're not really trees, they're really going to be hedging material. There's not going to be any significant tree canopy in the rear yard whatsoever. My biggest issue is the design of the veranda off the rear of the house. It, it is just simply not compatible with this style of architecture, with this era of housing in this neighborhood. You don't, it's basically just a big flat stucco wall with three openings cut out of it. You, you would never see a design element like that in a home of this age. And I'm also concerned that 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 plat- that veranda is just a platform that's eighteen inches off the ground, there's no railing. I don't even know that that's like allowable by by code. I mean, it seems to me like it would be a safety issue. But anyway, because of that element, I I can't find the project compatible with itself or with the neighborhood. But if there is consensus to approve, I would really ask that you have them correct the plan information sheet to show the true height of the building. And to remove that light and to plant a tree.
Sorry, I did have the veranda and and miss talking about it, but I do have a question if I may ask my colleague.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, why are you post, I like front door lights, why are you opposed to a front door light?
It's, it's not a front door light, the door is recessed in an alcove. Why would you put the light out in front of the house and then you go into a dark alcove and you try and put your key in the lock? There's no, the light needs to be by the door. Uh, people use lights like salt and pepper on badly designed dishes nowadays, throw them on there for no reason.
Commissioner Chow?
Yes, thank you. Um, I I too appreciate the applicant's effort um in going back and making revisions, uh, being mindful of the comments. That were made by the planning commission, so thank you for doing that. Um, I think, I think there was great effort in in accomplishing that. Um, and so. Um, I guess my only comment would be with. Say, John, that the veranda had stucco in all three areas.
It's, yeah, I mean, if you look at the, it's most visible in the isometric drawing. Um, well, I can't, I can't open up here, but yeah.
Um, I I guess my only concern is, you know, if the applicant, even though he took away hundreds on the square feet from the master bedroom later, somehow enclosed that. And made that interior room after, um, you know, the construction is completed, that would be my my primary concern with regard to the veranda. The eighty four square feet veranda, but and so those would be my comments.
Okay, thank you.
So I should trust my, um, I should have more confidence in my opinions instead of referring to other people before speaking. Because the veranda was the number one, um, I should back up and say. I as well appreciate um what the homeowner and architect have done to to try to bring this up to standards based on our comments. Um, I also agree with everything that our commissioners have said. I, the land, the the fact that there's no shade tree in the backyard is, I mean. I I can speak about that for decades, but um, but my biggest concern was the veranda and like um. Commissioner Chow has said, it just seems to me that it's ripe for enclosure. And um adding on space without having to go through the process and it it. It, I agree, it's not, it's not part of a design element that is compatible with the architecture, it's just, it's essentially just an. Unenclosed room that given time, it will be enclosed. Um, and that is something that I think that we all agree is not um. Something that we want to have be a precedent, so um if that can be fixed by. If we feel comfortable having staff fix that and, you know, not. Continuing this or approving, denying it, I don't know. I mean, I'm I'm looking to my fellow commissioners to say, do we? You know, feel that staff can work with the architect and the homeowner to fix these concerns or. And I know that we haven't heard from you, Chair Brody, but I just. So that's where I'm left.
Uh, I don't consider this, uh, the veranda issue something that could be resolved by way of a a condition. And I don't, I'm not in favor in just passing on the issue to staff after, let's staff figure it out. Uh, without any s- uh, strong guidance from us. I mean, I'm not a adverse to a continuance, uh, we have problems with this drawing to begin with. Uh, where the veranda issue could be addressed. And the applicant can come back to us, so that wouldn't be something I'd uh be adverse to, but I I don't think it would be. Uh, in my mind, something I'd I'd support with regard to uh just turning it over to staff. I I don't think that's what a commission should be doing. So do we have a motion?
Um, I'll move to continue design review case number twenty one dash fifty five and. Pointy two dash fifty four at fourteen twenty four Bradbury Drive.
Second.
Take a date, do we need a date?
Hold on.
Can I continue to a date certain or uh to a date to be determined?
A date to be determined, I think is what would probably be.
Yeah, continue the project to date and certain to address the veranda, the veranda issue. At which point we'd have to renotice the the public hearing.
Okay, so do I have to repeat all of that?
No, I I'll say, or somebody, no, you second who did.
And and for stuff clarification, um, so we can better guide the applicant, uh, is it just the concern of just having a veranda or the design of the veranda? Or just.
All of the above and and some of the comments that were made about the the uh reference to the height. Uh, in the uh, in the application and some points were made by uh. Uh, Commissioner Dustin that I think should be incorporated as well. I, you know, I stopped dead after the veranda, I, you know, they lost me on veranda. So the issue that came up uh on other items that may or may not. Uh, move the commission one way or the other, I would advise the applicant to get everything squared away.
I mean, if just you want to poll us for feedback, I'm not opposed to the idea of a veranda, but this. Design is just way too industrial and contemporary looking, it does not fit the architectural style of the home or the neighborhood.
Okay, and then Commissioner Dustin also mentioned about the front door and the window trims. Just for clarification, it's also a concern that they get those adjusted.
Concern of mine, I didn't hear anybody else.
But I, but I wouldn't, uh, I I wouldn't advise the applicant to. Uh, ignore those comments, a- as long as they're doing something here, why not do it the right way?
What about um? How might the applicant be able to resolve the issue of that we're concerned it could be turned into another room? Because a lot of people have patios in verandas, I mean, I agree, there's nothing adverse to that.
I'm reluctant to suggest design solutions. I've thought of a couple myself that I would be happy with, but I don't want to.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say this correctly. Do we want him to address that issue, though? I'm not going to say how to do it, I agree. Because I agree with you.
It was, actually, it was not something I occurred to me until tonight.
I think that, I mean.
Because verandas and patios are everywhere.
Right, but I think that with certain designs, I mean, it's part of the, this veranda is part of the roof versus like mine isn't, I have a a. Area that is kind of enclosed or whatever, but it is not the actual roof of the same structure. Leading to the possibility of just enclosing it, you know, it's. I don't know how, again, it's, it is a design element that.
Good architect could easily.
Yeah, like I think that there's a design element, you know, there's design ways to make it not look so. Much part of the house, like I I don't know how to verbalize it, but.
Okay, thank you for the clarification and um with that, first and second, I can take roll call. Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair Brody?
Yes.
That's a five oh vote for a continuance, thank you.
Approval of minutes, can I move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair Brody?
Yes.
Five oh vote for approval minutes.
Okay. Adjourn the time.
No, there's a resolution. I'm sorry, there's.
The approval of the resolution.
Oh, yeah, well, I thought I signed the thing earlier.
That was from the last meeting, so we have a resolution for item number four. We can discuss it or you can approve it upon consent.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair Brody?
Yes.
Five oh vote for approval of.
Really quick, um, I was talking, I was speaking with staff earlier today, I can uh believe that's already going to be June, which means reorg. Um, so for the next uh meeting in June, we'll be reorganizing, uh, I want to. Thank uh Chair Brody. Love how fast these meetings go. So I just really want to thank you for your leadership, much appreciated. I know you've done a a great deal of volunteerism here in the city. Um, so I really appreciate this year has been great working with you as the chair and. With all of you too, uh, all commissioners, appreciate the hard work that you put in, um, I like to remind everyone that you're volunteers. You do this for the love of the city that you have, so really appreciate it. Um, on that concludes my director's report, thank you.
Appreciate it. Eric, can I make a quick public service announcement? So tonight, in about twenty minutes, they're going to have uh Brad Knight light up at the high school. Um, I would encourage everyone to go take a look at it, what, I mean, you can see it, the hop tours tomorrow from one to three and five to seven, but. Tonight, you'll see it lit up like the kids will see it, so it's the most spectacular, so come see.
Yes, please. We're adjourned.
Yeah, thank you.